We're going to give the other commissioners kind of missing a few more minutes to get here. So, you know, go ahead and continue on with the, you know, I guess I interrupted the happy chatter. And sorry, guys. Supervisors and managers kind of look at me nervously because I'm keeping employees here. I'm sure you all don't mind. It is kind of, you know, cool in here and anti-stress. Well, hopefully. So we'll go ahead and get started. Erica, if you could go ahead and do the roll call. Didn't hear you.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Yep.
Here.
Odericio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
All right, and we're all here. If we could stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on here. Okay. If we can go ahead and have a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I don't, there it is. It's a little slow, like the rest of us. All right, the motion has passed. All right, next we have awards and presentations. And I think people are here for that, considering everything else on our agenda is a little boring. Just saying. Okay, we are happy to recognize the winners of the county's employee team of the season awards. And for the first time in over a year, we can do so in person. And in fact, Commissioner Baca said this is the first time she's been able to do it in person. So this is great. These employees have all gone above and beyond to demonstrate outstanding service and dedications to the county and its residents to be honored with the Spring of 2021 Awards. We will first announce the team of the season winners, followed by the employee of the season category winners, and finish with introducing the overall employee of the season winners. The winners and their supervisors are here in person this morning, and we will have a chance to speak after we have read their nomination. Commissioner Pinter.
Yes, beginning with our teams of the season awards, we are joined this morning by Byron Fanning, Director of Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Arts, along with the special events team. Come on down with your team, Byron. The team award, Team of the Season Award recognizes project teams and work groups that have successfully collaborated outside their normal routine work duties to accomplish a significant goal that positively impacted the workplace or Adams County. I will go ahead, you all come down, I'll just keep reading and then we'll turn it over to Byron. The special events team, which includes Adam Guerindo, Melanie Davidson, Courtney Cox, Ryan Monica, Selena Holgan, Dennis Lopez, Drew Moore, Lucas Bustos, Serena Quintana, Lorena Moreno, and was not, and they were all nominated by Cassandra Vossler with this submission. Over the last several months, the special events team has really stepped up for our community. Staff helped with the logistics for our COVID-19 vaccination site at Riverdale Regional Park. They did not hesitate to pull together all the tasks, put all their tasks on hold to provide the support to our community that began the path out of the pandemic. Some worked 10-hour days outside, in the snow, directing traffic in cold weather. Scheduling became difficult as vaccine inventory and demand suddenly increased. But this amazing team has never hesitated to be flexible in ensuring all shifts and posts were covered. They worked as a team to develop the best possible traffic plan to avoid long lines and traffic backups. They worked with other departments to make sure the roads were repaired, the snow was removed, the signage was created, and much, much more. After a full year without events, this team is ready to get back to what they love. But they never once hesitated to jump in and serve the community during the pandemic. Byron, would you and anyone from your team like to make a few comments?
Yes, Commissioner Pinter, thank you very much. Thank you for having us here today. I am going to introduce Cassandra in just a second, who did the nomination. But I can't tell you how proud I am of this team and how much they were able to accomplish. The greatest thing for me is whenever they were asked to do something, there wasn't complaining. It was just, okay, how do we do it? Let's come together and make it happen. So couldn't be prouder. And here is Cassandra Vossler.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to recognize this small but mighty team. As you heard, they helped with COVID vaccine logistics during the spring, but I think that there's more projects that they really deserve recognition for. Many of you probably don't know some of these team members because they are completely behind the scenes. They are the reason that the visions of the special events happen within Adams County, from the county manager's visions to your visions. They help execute everything. So I just want to say thank you to all of them for their past, their dedication over the past year, and especially their dedication over the last two months as we have opened the floodgates to special events, and they have stuck right in there. We are short-staffed, but they are all still working their tails off. And I can't be more excited to host the 116th Annual Adams County Fair with them all by my side. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you, guys.
I know, I know you guys are wrapping up and heading out, but thank you so much for your service to the community. I know that county manager cited your excellence and your traffic plans, quite frankly, to many of our neighbors as they were trying to implement similar vaccine clinics. So your reputation grows beyond just our workforce and has had a ripple effect in the community. So thanks, thanks for all that you do.
Good morning. So the first employee of the season award today is for collaboration, helping, and mentoring. This category honors individuals who positively influence others by working towards strategic plan goals, participating in change initiatives, and investing time in coaching, mentoring, and being a role model for others. Matt Rivera, Director of the Community Safety and Well-Being Department, has joined us today along with Brooke Petry. Brooke was nominated by Max Circoni, who wrote, "Brooke is one of the shining stars of the CSWB department." You may have been, you have may seen her on the local news highlighting our community tool shed. Brooke expressed interest in working with me on data-related projects for CSWB, and her passion and creativity led to her becoming one of the primary subject matter experts for code compliance data. While still serving the community as a code officer, she has begun working on publicly, public-facing dashboards and has helped greatly to expand the capacity of our data cleaning operation. Her participation in developing and building the tool shed has been instrumental to its completion and rollout. Brooke has such enthusiasm for helping the residents, and it shows as she provides top-notch service to the residents of Adams County. Welcome, Matt and Brooke, and would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you very much and good morning, everyone. Madam Chair, members of the commission. It's obviously an honor and a privilege to ever receive recognition for any of our employees, especially amongst such a great agency. But to do so, I'd like to turn it over to Gail as the supervisor to touch on a few points.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you all?
Good morning.
Thank you for recognizing Brooke this morning. She has been such an asset to our team. I can't even explain. Whenever we have a project to do, Brooke's always the first one to say, yes, I want to join. Yes, I'll be on the team. Yes, I'll help do it. So Brooke's always willing to jump in with both feet. She's helped a lot with an audit that we recently did, which we had never done in our department before. So she, she's the face of our tool shed right now. She's been on the news. She goes up and she's on the videos that we've done for the tool shed. So she's the face of our department right now, and we really appreciate everything she does. Brooke, thank you for everything.
Congratulations, and thank you, Brooke.
All right, this will be, this will be interesting. I did not bring my glasses again. I always forget them on the day I have to read stuff, so. Good morning, Commissioner Tedesco. Our next category is Making It Happen, and we welcome Andrea Zugzwirt, Sue Bozenofsky, and Danette Burns from Human Services for this award. The Making It Happen category honors employees who achieve a desired outcome despite facing adversity, such as a lack of resources, unexpected challenges, et cetera. Susan Adams nominated Andrea by writing, "Andrea is the point person for all things former foster care Medicaid." Youth who emancipate from foster care after age 18 are eligible for this program until they are 26. We often find issues with continued coverage for these youth, and we turn to Andrea for help, to help us figure it out. Due to the pandemic, youth under 27 who emancipated from care are eligible for some temporary specialized funding. As our team reached out to these youth, we discovered more and more errors with our Medicaid coverage. One youth has had cases sent to collections after going to the ER for asthma because he had lost his coverage. Another has delayed having his wisdom teeth out despite significant pain. Many have not seen a doctor or dentist to maintain their health as they did not understand the coverage issues could be corrected. Andrea is always incredibly helpful and either fixes the issues or points us in the right direction with an amazing attitude. One of my clients told me she was one of the goddesses for giving, getting us coverage reinstated retroactively. Andrea truly makes a difference for these vulnerable youth. Would you like to speak?
Good morning. My name is Sue Bozenofsky, and I have the honor of inviting Danette Burns up here, who is Andrea's supervisor, to say a few words, but I wanted to say a few words myself. This is a very special recognition because Andrea was nominated by somebody in a completely different area, children and family services. I don't know how often that happens, but I think it's very special and very important. And in our department, we are trying to do more cross-team, cross-department work. So congratulations, Andrea and Danette.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrea is a very humble person. She would say that her team deserves a lot of recognition also, and we do have them in the audience as well. Andrea receives so many different requests from different departments, internally, externally, from the state to other county partners. And they seek her out because she is always willing to research and find a solution for families as quickly and efficiently as possible at any given time. So she has a reputation with other state and county members, and I really appreciate all of her hard work. Andrea's worked for Adams County for 12 years, and she has a passion to serve. So I want to thank her for her commitment and all of your support during these last few years. So thank you, Andrea.
If you, if you would, I'd like to say a few words, and you don't have to come back to the podium, but I do want to say a few words. And one that I would like to say is that in reading this, it was very tough to get through this because of my involvement and my experience with foster care and the state of foster care as it is right now. And I just want to give a shout out to the Human Services Department, the foster care people. What you do is amazing, and what you do is so underrepresented. I feel that you are our, you know, superstar players, NFL. You do the things that need to be done. You need, you do the things that have to be done. When the government steps in and says, we are going to save this child, you are the ones that have to come through and provide that saving. It isn't just magically happen. It doesn't just appear. And without the proper resources and without the proper tools, it's virtually impossible to get that care. Sometimes we forget about those kids because, oh, they're being taken care of. They're in the system. Well, that system needs to be supported. And right now, we don't have the support that we need nationally, through the state or locally. And I just am so happy that this has brought a little bit of light towards that. And when they say, I'm a man of faith, and when they say, you know, they called you a goddess, I will just say that all of you who work in these types of areas, angels are among us, and they walk among us every day, and that's you. And I'm so grateful and happy to be here and representing you. So thank you. Well put, Commissioner Tedesco. Next, we present the Success in Practice category, and we have District Attorney Brian Mason with Cameron Munier here this morning. If you could please come on down. The Success in Practice Award honors an individual who plays an integral role in successful interventions, problem resolutions, and/or customer improvements. Cameron, who we called C-Money, Cameron Munier, was nominated by Jennifer Duarte, who wrote, and I quote, "As the senior attorney in the appellate unit, Cameron has sustained excellent work in support of the entire district attorney's office, especially during the pandemic. His unit handles appeals, post-conviction relief motions, civil forfeitures, criminal record ceilings, and provides support to all attorneys in the office with urgent legal matters and daily updates on case law. During the pandemic, criminal cases have been affected by public health orders, shutdowns, rule changes, and updated orders from the Colorado Supreme Court and the 17th Judicial District. Cameron worked tirelessly to keep up on all of the relevant orders and rule changes, which were a daily occurrence last spring. He made sure the attorneys in our office were prepared, taking appropriate action, and to assure, to ensure justice is served in all classes and in all cases. All this was in addition to serving as a critical member of the team that was in trial for weeks. Cameron is very deserving of recognition for his ongoing excellent service to the community of Adams County." Thank you, C-Money. And so Brian Mason, do you have a few comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. It's an honor to be standing in front of you on a day that we're recognizing one of the unsung heroes of the district attorney's office. And I'd like to introduce Jess Redman in just a second to introduce Cameron to you all, but I'll just say this. As the nomination stated, Cameron is the behind-the-scenes attorney at the DA's office that helps keep our criminal justice system afloat. And particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic, when everything shut down, but we couldn't, Cameron is one of the people that helped us keep the wheels of the criminal justice system running. And when I have an attorney, the truth is, I don't know a single person in my office who didn't come into this business because they want to serve the public. But part of being a DA is you get to go into court, and you get to make cool arguments, and you get to show the public that we're here fighting for victims. Cameron is a person who's not in court. He's the one who's back at the office, standing by the phone when an attorney calls and says, the judge won't let me get this piece of evidence in. Or the judge just made this ruling. What does the case law say? And he helps us get the right thing and the right accomplishment in that courtroom. So I can tell you all, the entire district attorney's office is watching this because Cameron is beloved, and I'm so proud to have him here today. And I'd like to introduce Jess Redman to introduce him to you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's a privilege to be here this morning. It's a privilege to be here in person. I thought we were going to erupt in a round of applause. You're ready, Commissioner Odericio, just by being here in person. It is a true pleasure to introduce C-Money, Cameron, my good friend, to the Success in Practice Award. Anyone who is an elected official, a manager, a supervisor, a leader of your department knows that you couldn't be in that position without standing on the shoulders of giants. Cameron is a giant. Cameron is a subtle, quiet, kind giant. Cameron's committed to the service of public. Cameron is loyal to the mission of the district attorney's office. We are better as a district and better in Adams County because of Cameron Munier. I had the privilege of not only knowing Cameron for years, but sitting alongside him in a particularly tragic case that we handled for a number of years and for a number of weeks in trial. Cameron and I shared hard times, and there wasn't one good moment out of that case. Unfortunately for victims of crime, that's often the case. But Cameron truly is the foundation for justice at the district attorney's office, and he's relied upon by many, and he's a giant, and I appreciate your recognition of him here today.
Just like to say thank you for this recognition. It is a great honor. I would like to point out, however, that everything we do at the DA's office is part of a concerted team effort, and all of my colleagues deserve this recognition just as much as I do. Thanks.
And that, and that, my friends, sums up Cameron Munier, the epitome of a team player and truly the backbone of the organization. So thank you. Commissioner Henry?
Thank you. And Cameron.
And Cameron, I, I, JD17 is so lucky to have you, so thank you so much for being here. We, we appreciate you immensely. And on the words of my friend, "We stand as elected officials on shoulders of giants." We have a room full of giants right now, and I appreciate every single one of you that are here. We wouldn't be able to do the work that we do without you all, and I just want to make sure that you know, all five of us appreciate every single one of you that sits here, whether if you're getting an award or not. So with that, we have one another presentation. So next, we present the Sustainability Star category. For this award, we welcome Jamie Runco, Carrie Daggett, Allison Walter from the Human Services. Come on down. Oh, we know the human service people are here. Yeah. The Sustainable Star category honors someone who demonstrates innovative, impactful acts of environmental stewardship that help save the county money or positively impact the health and safety of county employees and residents. Allison Walter nominated Jamie by writing, "Jamie consistently demonstrates leadership skills in her work in the Child and Welfare Service Division. She regularly reaches out and works collaboratively with all staff and all sections of our division to help with training and with kinship placement processes. Members of our team consistently seek her out for support, guidance, training, and coaching. In addition to her normal work responsibilities, she takes on extra projects such as developing a kinship information page on the county website. She regularly helps to streamline paperwork by volunteering to create documents that are easy to fill out and to improve upon processes in the work done by our team. Jamie has served our agency well in the past 10 years and is deserving of recognition for all her great work and years of service and to caring for the Adams County community." Jamie, welcome and time to speak. Whoever.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Carrie Daggett. I'm one of the Deputy Directors for Adams County Human Services and I oversee the Children and Family Services Division. And it is an honor to be here today for my first in-person public hearing, as well as to recognize our, our team members. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Allison Walter, who is Jamie's supervisor, and she'd like to say a few words.
Good morning. I'm really happy to be here and to talk about Jamie, who, as I said in the nomination, has been with the county for 10 years, joining us and working in our intake investigation team for about four years as a lead worker and then joining the kinship team. And our, our team serves about 60% of the, the families that have children that have been removed from their parents due to child abuse and neglect. And on any given day, the team is serving between 250 and 350 families in the community caring for children. Jamie is our team leader. She is helpful to everyone she knows. She is a delightful human being and a joy to know, and everyone that gets to meet her likes her. And so, I'll let Jamie talk if she wants to. Do you want to?
Sure. Good morning. I just want to say thank you so much. I'm really honored to receive this recognition and similarly to what the last reward winner said, it's really due to my team. Anything that I do that is great is due to the kinship team and my supervisor, who's also so amazing and supportive. So, thank you kinship team and thank you Allison.
Now we will present the Unsung Hero category, and for that we have Kathy V. Hill, Susan Bosnowski, Toni Marie Gallegos from the Human Services. Ask you to step back up, many of you. This particular award celebrates high-quality, reliable, critical work that if not completed would compromise operations. This person functions behind the scenes and is willing to improve work situations and does it without fanfare or being prompted. Toni Marie Gallegos nominated Kathy and wrote, "Kathy is often the first person our clients interact with in the child support services and sets the tone and expectations for all of us. She provides stellar customer service and often goes above and beyond with both external and internal clients. After a rough call, I can rely on her to listen patiently and give advice. During the pandemic, she was required to be in the office and never complained, which shows her commitment and dedication in making a difference in everything she does. She is our unsung hero, and I hope she knows how proud we are of her and how she inspires all of us. Thank you for being the amazing person you are." Would any of you like to say a few words?
I feel really honored to get up here twice in one day and have two employees that are being honored today, so thank you so much. Sue Bosnowski again, and I would like to say just a couple things about Kathy. I was going into the building throughout the COVID pandemic and Kathy was there also, and I would make my rounds and say hello, and she was always cheerful, working diligently. I, you know, she is truly an unsung hero for being there the whole time, so thank you. And this is a well-deserved honor. First, I'd like Michelle Lee to come up. She is Kathy's supervisor, just to say a few words, and then after her, we'll have Toni Marie Gallegos come up. She nominated Kathy.
Good morning Commissioners. Good morning everybody. I just want to say a couple words about Kathy. I have worked with her for 20-plus years with the county. She's the first person you see at the front desk in child support. She's dedicated, loyal to our team, our section, and our county. I just want to say this is well-deserved and it's a great honor to work with her.
Good morning Commissioners. After all, she's the reason why we're here today. I'm very glad to see Kathy V. Hill receive this award. It is very well-deserved. Thank you Kathy for being so wonderful and always so helpful. You represent our child support department so very well, and we also very much appreciate you. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. I want to thank everybody here, and I couldn't be here without my team. They're great. Thank you.
Congratulations Kathy.
Okay, I have the last award for today, so I'd like to welcome to the podium Dean Berenbaum and Director of Community Safety and Wellbeing, Matt Rivera. And Matt is joined by his mom and his wife this morning for this great, Dean, I'm so sorry, so sorry Matt. Dean, Dean is joined by his mom and his wife. And the, the category is the Extra Effort category. So this award celebrates a unique level of service that fosters good business relationships and enhances a positive reputation. Ronald Sigmund nominated Dean by writing, "During the pandemic, the Office of Emergency Management has been tasked with providing logistic support to testing sites and vaccination clinics throughout Adams County. This support included the state's largest testing site at Waterworld and more than 12 community and equity vaccination sites. Dean worked tirelessly to coordinate the logistic needs for each of these events, some of which were multi-day and even multi-month in duration. He researched and worked with numerous vendors to acquire the necessary logistics support for each specific and with, each specific site and with the individual site host to ensure all their needs were met. He responded to each site to help set up tents, traffic cones, and other logistics support, and then assisted with the site demobilization. He made himself available at all hours of the day responding to the sites and after out, after normal working hours, on weekends and even on holidays, to address any site logistic concerns. Dean's extra effort was a major contributing factor to the, to the success of these important public health community events. Dean is more than just the winner of this category. He has also been chosen as the overall Spring Employee of the Season. As such, Dean is receiving $350 in cultural and action points and a trophy in addition to a certificate of recognition. Matt and Dean, would you like to say a few words this morning?
Yes, good morning Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Thank you again. You, you scared me because my mom is actually in town for the first time in almost two years, so I thought she might have actually come to, I, I forgot my, my lunch or something, but it is a true hon, honor and privilege to introduce Dean because if you, if anyone who's had an opportunity to meet or work with Dean, he is just one of the most authentic and good people you will ever encounter. And you combine that with his commitment and his expertise and, and it's really an amazing combination for the county and the community and what sacrifices him and the OEM team made. Before I turn it over to Dean though, I'm going to ask Ron to say a few words, the manager of OEM, and then invite Dean up. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, how are you? I'd just like to start off with saying it's an honor and a privilege to have this opportunity to recognize our great employees. I mean, you don't get this everywhere, and to have the opportunity to do that, I think is just fantastic, and it really speaks well for the county and for the leadership of the county. Dean started with OEM back in 2019 and 2020 happened, and so he really didn't have time to get his feet wet before 2020 kicked off. He had limited OEM experience when he started with us, and of course, we threw him right into the deep end of the pool with the pandemic. We actually managed over 20 vaccination clinics and test sites, providing those logistics. Dean had to research all the vendors. Dean responded out there 24/7, like I said. Never complained, never offered a word of criticism. He was all about helping support the community, and as a result of Dean's direct work, we probably saved a lot of lives. And for that effort, I would just like to thank him and, and everyone in OEM. Thank you. Dean.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. Deeply honored by this recognition. Like everyone says, it's always a team effort. Our leadership has been great throughout this. It made it easy to accomplish what we accomplished, and I'm truly thankful.
Thank you. Thank you so much Dean. I know many Commissioners and I also attended the vaccination clinics. Thank you for all you've done to ensure the success of this critically important health and safety issue for our community.
All right, well it falls on me to read the fine print for the end of the program. Our Employee of the Season category award winners are all receiving 5,000 Culture and Action Points and a certificate of recognition. To all our winners, thank you for your service to the Adams County community. We would also like to thank all employees joining us today to support and encourage your colleagues as they are honored for their great work. We also encourage you to nominate deserving coworkers. The Summer Employee and Team of the Season nomination is currently open, so please visit my Adams for more information on how you can nominate deserving coworkers and teams. Thank you everyone for joining us today.
So my question to the Communication Department, we don't have anything in here on if we should be coming down for pictures like we normally do. Yes, okay. So all the winners, we need you to come down, up right front, front center, see the, the glow right there? That's the center, and the Commissioners will join you.
Little celebration as they head out the door.
See, I told you all our stuff was boring. Everybody's leaving now when we actually get into our business. What the heck? So much for a big head as a politician. Roadway improvements, anyone? Stick around. Brian? Brian, are you leaving us too? I mean, come on, we're exciting. Oh, no, 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 don't guilt him into staying. You can't find his phone. Okay, everybody. The DA lost his phone there. They found his phone. Now he doesn't want to stay. On the arm of his chair, very secretive place. All right, next is the public comment. Erica, do we have anyone signed up today?
We do have Tom Green with United Power signed up.
Hey, Tom, come on up. It's so nice to see you in person too, by the way. Yes.
Good morning Commissioners. Yes, it is a pleasure to see you. I'm your Community Affairs Representative, but I brought the big guns with me. I have two of our directors. I have Ginny Busek from the East District and I have Dave Rose from the South District. I also have our Government and Regulatory Affairs Officer, my boss Troy Whitmore with me, and I also have the big cheese, our newest CEO, Mark Gabriel, who's actually going to do the speaking here.
Great.
And hopefully, long-time CEO.
Well, that's my, that's my goal Ginny, I promise. Well, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you today. This is really the annual opportunity that United Power has to demonstrate what we call the Cooperative Difference. As you know, United Power is an electric company that is a cooperative, and what that really means is we provide electricity to homes and businesses like a traditional utility, but we're actually owned by the communities that we serve and our members. We call everyone members because there's a real difference here, and we're governed by an 11-member board, and thanks to our two board folks that came with us today, we've got a 900 square mile service territory that extends from the mountains of Coal Creek and Golden Gate Canyon, along the I-25 corridor, Carbon Valley to the farmlands in Brighton, Hudson and Keansburg, stretching out to northern Commerce City area, just around the DIA, which is one of the fastest-growing territories in the United States. And at the end of June, in fact, we energized our 100,000th meter. There's only 30 other electric cooperatives in the United States out of 900 that have 100,000 or more meters energized, and that's roughly 300,000 to 350,000 people. This also includes the northern parts of Adams County, again, one of the fastest-growing areas in the country, and we serve you here as a not-for-profit electric cooperative. It, what it really means is we try to provide the electricity at the lowest possible cost, and should there be anything excess in terms of margins, as we call them, those get returned to you. Those, those earnings are returned to our members and we allocate them back annually to the membership. As the cash position allows, our board elects to retire those margins and return them to members in the form of capital credits, and that's really why I'm here today. In 2021, our board chose to retire $5.5 million, which was allocated among our membership from the oldest members to some of our newest, so they can get and experience the, the value of being part of the cooperative family. Adams County has more than 50 accounts with United Power, including the Government Center, Detention Facilities, Justice Center, water pumping stations, golf courses, fairgrounds, and your new Riverdale Animal Shelter. Since 1997, United Power has returned more than $557,000 to the county, and today that includes $27,247.62, which I'm delivering to. and forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, which I'm delivering today.
Yay.
We appreciate the opportunity to serve you and enjoy having you as a member of United Power. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, yes, thank you.
The chair is new.
And Troy, we won't mention RTD today.
We could though, we could though.
Y'all be hearing from me.
You promise?
Oh yeah, yeah.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much, everybody, we really appreciate it.
And I have the real check right here.
You got the real check. We prefer the real check, yes.
I have to thank you so much. This has to be the most welcoming meeting, hearing or boardroom that I see during the year. You guys make it feel very warm and inviting and a community, thank you for that.
Oh, thank you, we appreciate that, thank you. Commissioner Tedesco.
So I'd just like to say to you as a member and living in the reunion area of Buffalo Mesa, your service to our community, at least my community as an individual, has been exemplary. I don't think I can remember a time where I've lost power. I don't think that I can remember a time where I have called your office and had a conversation, whether it be billing or otherwise, that I didn't experience the same welcoming environment, so thank you very, very much.
Commissioner Pinter.
Yeah, we seem to be transitioning quite rapidly into elected official comments, so I'll just take a minute while you are here, looking this over, your packet highlighted two things that I want to thank you for specifically. The temporary halt to disconnections during the pandemic was really meaningful. I called your government relations specialist Troy, specialist, you know, leader, you know, Troy, jack of all trades. Mm-hmm, yes sir. And his response was immediate during the pandemic that they were not, you all were not gonna be disconnecting power to your members during a time of crisis. And I also want to thank you for the no rate increase in 2021. You are not only member-owned, but you are just member-driven and having a power utility in our community that puts members first is really important. And I know it probably took a lot of flexibility and ingenuity to keep everyone safe during this difficult time and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and add a little bit to that, because I'm a member of the other, I mean customer of the other one, who said if they put a substation in my neighborhood that we wouldn't have any more outages. Yeah, that didn't work, so just saying. So I wish I was a member of United Power, because you guys are an amazing team, so thank you.
Commissioner, can we get a picture, just so they have, if we could get a picture of everyone with the commissioners? And Jim will stand on me.
The ceremonial chair.
You got the big check somewhere?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Love your shirt, by the way. All right. Now we move into elected official communication. Commissioner Odoricio, you have your wish to speak?
No, I just wanted to, I was, that was actually during the last piece of the agenda, so I'm gonna withdraw that. Just thank the folks that came in today.
Is there any other commissioners that would like to speak? Okay, no high verbal needs, phew, okay. All right, next is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, thank you chair.
All right, motion has passed. All right, next is new business, county manager, what do you have for us?
Good morning commissioners, first I'd like to congratulate all the employees who were recognized today. I am so proud to be part of a talented and professional team. And then I also got really excited when Commissioner Baca said Matt's mother was in town, only because that means she would bring amazing New Mexican green chili. And, you know, we all know the green chili from New Mexico is the best, right?
Wow. Wow.
But the first item before you is a resolution approving amendment two to the agreement between Adams County and Keith Commissary Network LLC for services. And I believe our, Jan Tierney, our purchasing agent, will be presenting this item. I don't have my glasses either, so I'm like trying to read.
Good morning commissioners. The sheriff's office currently has an agreement with a company to provide commissary services from which inmates may purchase products such as hygiene items, snacks and other incidentals at the Adams County Detention Facility. A request for proposal was posted and an agreement was awarded to Keith Commissary Network LLC in November of twenty eighteen. The agreement allows for four one-year renewals. This is a second one-year renewal. The sheriff's office recommends renewing the current agreement as they are pleased with their services. The county pays no money for these services and the commission rate of thirty-seven percent received from the commissary sales pays for education, counseling services, instructors for life skills, drugs and alcohol treatment and reading material for the inmates. The recommendation is that the board approves amendment two to the agreement with Keith Commissary Network for commissary services for the Adams County Detention Facility.
Commissioner Odoricio, do you have a question?
Actually, that was from before also, sorry. I don't know how to undo it.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Okay, I don't see any, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment two to the agreement between Adams County and Keith Commissary Network.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion has passed.
All right, the next item before you is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Express Staffing Agency for subsidized employment services. And I believe Meg Pickens from our Human Services Department will be presenting this item.
Good morning commissioners, I am the new contract administrator. Today I am here to request the approval of a single source contract with express staffing professionals. The purpose of this contract is to use express staffing for the employee of record for a subsidized employment program. This is an opportunity for our TANF eligible Adams County participants. Subsidized employment is a planned structured learning experience that takes place at a work site for a limited amount of time. Subsidized employment is paid work-based learning experience for TANF eligible participants to gain job skills. Employment occurs within the private for-profit sector, the nonprofit sector and the public sector. Once employment is identified for our participant, express staffing will become the employer of record and onboard the participants by completing W-4I-9 background checks and is responsible for paying into workman's comp and unemployment insurance. Weekly express staffing will send Adams County WBC invoices for reimbursement. The opportunity to use express staffing for subsidized employment to help our TANF eligible participants overcome barriers, gain job skills and add experience to their resumes to set them up for success in building more stable careers. Service dates will be July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The program will serve one hundred participants with an average pay rate of twenty dollars an hour, which is eight hundred and thirteen, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars going towards participant wages in the subsidized employment program. Thank you for your time, any questions?
All right, do we have any questions commissioners? I don't see any questions, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve, as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has passed.
All right, the next item is a resolution approving amendment one to the agreement between Adams County and Roxol Consulting Group, Inc. for professional engineering services for the Sixty-second Avenue Improvement Project. And Jennifer Shee from our Public Works Department will be presenting this item.
Good morning commissioners. Today I present the amendment one for the Sixty-second Avenue Improvement Project. The overall objective of the project is to improve the roadway safety, system functionality, mode and model facility and drainage system. As the design of the project has developed with a field survey and video inspection, it was discovered that the existing storm sewer's outfall located at the six hundred fifty-five West Sixty-second Avenue is undersized for the required capacity. The existing pipes range from eighteen inches to twenty-eight inches and does not have positive drainage. It is necessary to improve the outfall system according to the Fifty-fourth and Pickles Outfall System Plan by the Mile High Flat District dated December twenty eighteen. Additional outfall and water quality facility design and fees are needed for the project element. Beyond the original scope and the proposed fees, the Board of County Commissioners award an agreement to Roxol Consulting Group, Inc. on April twenty-one, twenty twenty. It is recommended that amendment one with Roxol Consulting Group, Inc. be approved in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred twelve dollars for a total not to exceed agreement amount of one million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The anticipated contract finish date is August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Commissioner Tedesco.
I just have a quick question, is the reason that it wasn't identified because this is an underground pipe and it wasn't identified?
Yes.
Until an inspection was made?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions commissioners? I don't see any other questions, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve as read.
Do I have a second? Great, thank you.
Thank you commissioners.
And motion has passed.
All right commissioners, the last item before you is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Senior Hub for a home delivery mills program. And our deputy director of human services, Eddie Valdez, will be presenting this item.
Good morning commissioners. Today I'm requesting the approval of a single source contract between Adams County Human Services and the Senior Hub to serve Adams County older adults with daily hot home-delivered mills to meet the nutritional needs of our elder community. The Senior Hub is the only vendor that can provide this community connection to rural parts of Adams County such as Bennett, Watkins and Strasburg to serve our aging population. Senior Hub is the only vendor to offer the preparation and delivery of hot mills to our senior population while also providing the nutritional value within their service. The Senior Hub will provide the following within the scope of services in this agreement if approved. Daily hot mill delivery, five days per week, eight thousand to eighty-two hundred monthly mills will consist in that. Each will have each lunch hour for elders residing in Adams County in partnership with our current contracted restaurant provider, Golden Corel. They will provide frozen mills for ten to fifteen percent of participant clients upon request as needed to meet the nutritional needs of those specifically residing in the eastern plains or in the event of inclement weather that prevents daily hot mill delivery in the eastern plains. They will provide the state required monthly meal menu outlining the nutritional breakdown of each meal item under the direct supervision of a registered dietitian. They will provide quarterly one-on-one nutritional assessment for eligible older adult clients that receive home-delivered mills over a two-year period. They will perform qualifying program client intakes, reassessment and change of condition assessments as required by the state guidelines under the Old Americans Act. Sorry? They will also triage client wellness check referrals and to county entities for follow-up services in conjunction with older adult peer-led home-delivered mill delivery with daily visits. They will record and publish monthly client meal count and reconcile meal count discrepancies and they will manage and monitor ongoing client home-delivered meal waiting list and onboard new clients accordingly. The Senior Hub Home Delivered Meal Program will be a hundred percent funded with Rescue Plan Act dollars and the budget will be for the not-to-exceed amount of one million, six hundred thousand dollars for a two-year contract with service dates of August twenty twenty-one through July of twenty twenty-three. Any questions?
Commissioners, do we have any questions? I don't see any questions, do we have a motion?
Yes, I would move to adopt this resolution approving an agreement between Adams County's Senior Hub Home Delivery Meal Program.
And do we have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, county manager, anything else?
No, before I move it to Heidi, our county attorney, I did want just to publicly acknowledge and recognize Christina Martinez, who has now joined our team as the Director of Long-Term Recovery and Major Initiatives. And her first day was the thirteenth of July, I believe. And so Christina's in the audience, just wanted to welcome her. So thank you for joining our team, yes.
Great, thank you. County attorney, what do you have for us today?
Good morning commissioners, this is not on your agenda, but I would ask as time allows today that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding union ratification.
Great. What would a day be, a Tuesday, without one of our executive sessions?
I would want to disappoint.
We appreciate you, no, it's okay. All right, do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Any other surprise motions, county attorney?
That was it for me, at least as far as I know.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. So we're about to adjourn, this was an exciting meeting, I could tell by everybody's faces in the audience, at least we didn't come down to only one person in the audience. So thank you everybody for being here and we'll go ahead and adjourn and then we'll pick up in the study session. Thank you.